Green light is go, okay.
So they will not have to hit the button now to talk for the rest of the time.
Correct.
If they hit it now, they can turn it off.
Although I would be wary of the next microphone picking up, so just uh.
That's fine, yeah, this is for other comments, we would turn that on too.
Oh.
Well, new member, new microphone.
Is that why we did it?
Oh, that was a wonder.
Are you saying we had to get him approved before she came on board, or?
Special gift for you.
Special gift, yeah.
On the male side of the family, volume's not a problem in the Deca household. Jen's a little more soft spoken.
I do a lot of shh. It's thinking. Thinking about ya.
Thinking for you too?
Okay.
Watch, she'll get right on.
You're both trying to do it at the same time, that's your problem.
You picture.
Well, either did something, or it went to sleep, one or the other.
It's official, you're on the school.
I think it caught up with my desire to turn down the brightness.
Are we ready to go?
It's not dark enough for me.
Nothing wants to turn on over here, but we're all waiting to get on.
Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone, it is six PM, December seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and we are convening a regular meeting of the tonight's Board of Education in the Bonner Ray Media Center. Mr. Mucci, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Deca.
Here.
Ms. Press.
Here.
Mr. Suchaki.
Here.
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here, five present, none absent. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome our students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in the actions of the Board may participate during the public comments portion of this meeting. Please identify yourself on the sign-in sheet in the rear of the room. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available for review on our school district's website. Please silence your cellphone during the meeting, and would you join me in your signing pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So may I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please?
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Suchaki moves, I'll second. Is there any discussion, any changes, Mr. Evans or Mr. Suchaki?
I think we made a date change on Mr. Kiefer's contract. I think Mrs. Deca brought to my attention that, so I, at my last look, it looked corrected. We'll make sure we go over it when we bring the motion up.
Okay. So with that background then, I don't have to hear or make any other requests for approval of the, for changes to the agenda, so let's move to a vote, please.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Deca.
Aye.
Ms. Press.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero. Moving on to item number three, which is comments from the public. I see that Ms. Havlin would like to address the Board, so Ms. Havlin, you have the floor.
Do you have any movement over here?
Yeah, could use the mic, Jean, so that, that way it's recorded. Thank you.
Now, the school choir concert's tomorrow, so I may just break into song. Alright, so I wanted to address the Board tonight. During Thanksgiving break, an introductory letter, an opt-out form, was sent to parents indicating that a survey called the Developmental Relationship Survey would be conducted on Monday, December fifth. The survey would be about social emotional learning, and it would not ask more sensitive questions about potentially high-risk behaviors. Therefore, I did not opt out my daughter. On Monday, the survey was administered online by a third-party vendor, Search Institute, during social studies class, and it took about fifteen minutes for my daughter to complete. Following the survey, I received an email from Mr. Burek encouraging me to discuss the survey with my daughter, as all parents received the letter that, that took the survey, I presume. The letter also stated that support staff would follow up the next day, on Tuesday, in class to clarify the intent of the questions. Monday evening, after conversation with my daughter, I learned that there were questions on the survey that my husband and I find to be very sensitive and controversial, similar to the things that I've brought up in this meeting before. I also learned from the kid chatter after school, being typical middle schoolers, many did not take the survey seriously and claimed that they were not honest with their answers. Therefore, I asked Mr. Burek for the list of questions that were on the survey and how the survey results were going to be used. Mr. Burek seemed to indicate that the school didn't have a copy of the survey questions until after the survey was administered, which is concerning, but I was told that due to an agreement with the vendor, the school was not permitted to email the questions to parents. I would have to review a hard copy at school. Unfortunately, Mr. Burek did not have availability prior to today's meeting for me to see the survey. However, I do have the first three questions, and I'd like to read them to you. The first, which of these best describe you? Girl, boy, non-binary, third gender? Prefer to self-describe, or choose not to answer? Number two, do you identify as transgender? Yes, no, choose not to answer, I don't know? Third question, which of these describe you? Straight, not gay, lesbian, or bisexual? Gay or lesbian? Bisexual? I identify another way. Pansexual, demisexual, asexual, queer, et cetera. And there's a text box for the student to describe. I'm not sure, I prefer not to answer, or I'm not sure what this question means. Imagine you're eleven, twelve, or thirteen. You were told you didn't have to answer any of these questions, but they are in front of you. According to my daughter, no one has followed up with her class after the survey to explain the intent of the questions on the survey. There were more questions, I don't have them. An explanation on how the survey results are going to be used is not clear to me. I was told it is part of Ohio's strategic plan, calling out a collaborative approach to learning and wellness, and directed to the Ohio Whole Child Framework. I read through the Ohio Whole Child Framework materials, and I found nothing that suggests the need to include questions questioning children about their sexuality. However, the framework does say, "Family engagement is a shared responsibility between school staff members, community partners, and families, and should be proactive and reciprocal in nature. Families provide valuable insight, identify priorities, and provide perspectives, and cultural considerations. All families should have an opportunity to provide feedback on schools' whole-child practices and programs each year." I am interested in which families from CHS were included in the discussions or creations of this survey. This is the fourth time that I am speaking to you regarding the need for parent transparency and inclusion. There doesn't seem to be a context for why the school is asking these types of questions. What is the goal? What is the goal here with this survey? No one seems to be able to tell me what you're trying to accomplish. I do not know this, I, what I do know is this would not fly in a corporate or business setting. Why is it okay to continue to ask our kids these controversial things? I have welcomed involvement, or at least someone to talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Havlin. I'm moving on to agenda item number four, which is grants carryover from the last year, which is, Mr. Mucci, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. I was gonna do a presentation tonight, and I have a couple of handouts on grant carryovers from our prior fiscal year. Start by passing the first one of three down. So this is on our agenda tonight. It's under my section six A, T two Y, and this has all of our grants, and it's very small. So if anybody wants to hold up on their computer, they can. This next handout is our final expenditure report for fiscal twenty-two, that's coming out. And our last handout is the carryover to fiscal twenty-three. So as I, yeah, and how familiar is everyone with how grants carryover from a prior fiscal year to current? Maybe, maybe not as much right now. So we have a number of grants that come into the school district. And what this long, color-coded sheet does for me is this houses all of our five-hundred-level funds, grants that go along with it. And every grant in the five-hundred fund is a federal grant. Every grant in the four-hundred fund is a state grant. Every grant in the oh-nineteen fund is a local grant that we have. So these are all five-hundred-level grants, federal grants that we have coming to us. The bottom half of the page is fiscal twenty-three, the top half is fiscal twenty-two. So in fiscal twenty-two, we had our S R two, and that grant amount was two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. We had below that, the American Rescue Plan S R three, that was six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand eight dollars and change. We had the American Rescue Plan IDEA Part B Special Education Grant, that amount was thirty-seven thousand five ninety-six and change. Below that, we had Title One, that was ninety-one thousand three forty-five twenty-five. Below that, we had Expanding Opportunities for Each Child, which was four thousand four ninety-eight. Below that, we had Title Four A, which was fourteen thousand three eighty-four and change. Below that, we had our American Rescue Plan IDEA, Early Childhood Special Education, that was two thousand seven eighty-two forty-five. Below that, we had our Title Two A, which was nineteen thousand eight ninety-nine and change. So each one of these has a different fund number associated with it. So the top one, S R two, is five oh seven. Below that, also five oh seven. Below that, five sixteen. Below that, for Title One is five seventy-two. Below that, Expanding Opportunities for Each Child is also five seventy-two. Below that, Title Four A is four eighty-four. Below that, the Early Childhood Special Education's five eighty-seven. Below that, Title Two A is five ninety. So each one of these comes from the USAS manual, the fund code that we have in place. Next to that fund number, we have a four-digit item. And what that four-digit number represents is what's called the Special Cost Center. So it always has to be four digits, and always starts with the number nine. Typically, how it works is you would have nine-nine, and then twenty-two for fiscal twenty-two, or nine-nine twenty-three for fiscal twenty-three. Uh, the reason everything has to have that four-digit Special Cost Center is how everything's separated by grants. So one grant in and of itself would have its own Special Cost Center. So nine-nine two-two for Fund Five oh seven is our S R two grant. So it's pretty complex, I'm not gonna jump into the weeds too much on this, but I just wanted to give an overview. So as we go along the way from July, so our fiscal year starts seven-one and six-thirty, we have all of our expenditures and then the reimbursement requests. So we can see from the very, very top one that we have for fiscal twenty-two, S R two, we had forty-four thousand eight ninety-one and change that was spent. And we purchased a number of air purifiers, we had the Wilson Reading Supplies, and we had the MBD Medical Survey and Presentation that occurred a while, while back. Later on in the year in May, we did the salaries for three employees that we covered with S R three funds. And in June, we did the remaining portion of that salary for the fiscal year, along with the very top item of classroom furniture. So those other handouts I gave to everybody, the FBR adjustments, if we look at that, so this is all information that I have to input, what's called the CCFP system, along with our Assistant Superintendent Matt Young. So we work looking at our grants, and we go in and we have to complete the FBR, the final expenditure report, to wrap up all grants within the fiscal year. So the very, very top one that we have there is our Title One. So that amount of ninety-one thousand, so the very top left-hand corner, ninety-one thousand three forty-five and change, is the full grant amount that we have. We carry over the third column for reported expenditures, that's seventy-six thousand nine seventy-nine and change. And that amount is what we spent from Title One. Now, this is Title One, so if we look back on our sheet, Title One's kind of in the middle of that very top half that we had. So that was Fund Five seventy-two nine-nine two-two, that ninety-one thousand three forty-five twenty-five. And we can see that the expenditure total is seventy-six thousand nine seventy-nine and forty-two cents. And we can see each of the items in the box above it, what it was spent on for that. So if we went along the way, we had a teacher in October, a portion salary of it, another portion in January. We had introductory kits that we purchased with that grant in February. We had more for the teacher in March, and then we had the final amount for that teacher paid with Title One funds in May. And we had some other items that weren't, uh, we weren't able to put in the reimbursement request till this fiscal year. So we are given an amount of money for the grants, let's say ninety thousand dollars. We spend that, and then we ask O D E for reimbursement. So we spend first, and then get reimbursement back for those grants. We can see the cash balance on hand on this final expenditure report is six thousand nine twenty-six ninety-five, which is that balance coming at the end. So that's just the difference between what we had spent and what we reimbursed. So the yellow is the reimbursement amount, and the top portion, negative seventy-six thousand, is what we spent. So we brought in seventy thousand for reimbursements, we spent out seventy-six thousand, so that's the difference that we see right there. Now, the amount remaining, fourteen thousand three sixty-five eighty-three, where did we get that amount? So it's simply just subtracting the ninety-one thousand three forty-five twenty-five from the reported expenditures of seventy-six thousand nine seventy-nine forty-two. And that leads us to our fourteen thousand three sixty-five eighty-three. And we just do that for every grant that we have in place. So everything that we did not spend, the amount remaining, as long as we're allowed to, per O D E, and the federal regulations that we have for those grants, permit us to be able to carry those grant amounts over to the following year, so we don't lose those amounts that we have in place. So we're able to carry that fourteen thousand three sixty-five eighty-three to the new fiscal year, fiscal twenty-three. So the bottom half of the page has our grants for this fiscal year. So we have our five oh seven nine-nine two-two, which is our S R two, and that grant amount is thirty-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars ninety-nine cents. And I'll go through all the bottom ones later, but let's just stick with this Title One example that we're taking through. So the carryover amount is fourteen thousand three sixty-five eighty-three. Let's take a look at the last handout that we had, which was the allocations. So this last handout that we have is, and one thing, you know, there was some color on this, it might, you know, make it a little more, you know, enticing to look at. It's just so black and white, and just so blah, so I said, I like, you know, it's just.
Hey, Matt, can I just ask a question on the carryover? Is it the allocation minus what we spent, or minus what we reimbursed for? So even though we spent more than we were reimbursed for, they take out the total that we spent?
As the carryover.
As the carryover.
Right, we're still gonna get that small amount back.
Oh, we are, okay.
Absolutely, we get everything, yep.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so we get that carryover back. Everything's kind of segmented in fiscal years, it's really weird how the grants are.
I see, okay.
Yeah, so we'll get that last six thousand nine twenty-six ninety-five back. Actually, we did a couple days ago, actually, last week.
Because we spent it at the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay.
So we did get that back. So that fourteen thousand three sixty-five eighty-three that was unspent, again, when these grants come down, you know, the administration works on the plans of how they're gonna spend it within that fiscal year. So we still have this fourteen thousand, still allowable to carry over. All it does is it populates that incoming carryover line that we see, the second line. So see where it says original? Well, that's the total grant amount that we have coming to us as a school district for the year. So for the very top left-hand corner that we see right there, it's seventy-five thousand six eighty-seven thirty-six. So that's the original amount that we have for our Title One grant coming to us. Below that, we see the incoming carryover, which is fourteen thousand three sixty-five eighty-three. So when you add both those up together, that total, ninety thousand fifty-three dollars nineteen cents is the total amount that we have to spend for fiscal twenty-three. So it's simply just how the carryover works. So anything that we don't spend in the prior year just hops its way over to fiscal twenty-three, and it just populates that amount, and we have that amount to spend.
Good question.
Absolutely.
Ninety-one thousand last year, this year seventy-five, was that a decision on O D E's part, or?
Well, there's a long calculation on which they allocate grant amounts to school districts, so we have no, we have no bearing, really, in that calculation in which they use to allocate the funds to us. However, that ninety-one thousand's kind of a roll-up of everything into it, prior year carryover, along with that normal, original.
So we're probably always carrying a balance over.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
In certain grants, you can only carry so much over from year to year. So that's why we're very, sometimes we're kind of nervous as it comes to the end of the line, because we have to spend those ones, we don't wanna lose them, so. I could go line by line that we have, I won't, but it's a lot of accounting as we take care of our grants, allowable, uh, allowable expenses that we have. And actually, I wanted to bring this here, just to show everybody, this is my S R two file that I have. Take a look at how big this is. This is just on one grant that we have in place, so if we ever get audited, I'm ready for it. So, um, but, yeah, I mean, we can go through the others just to see, but, you know, as we work through that example with Title One, it's just really anything unspent hops over to the next fiscal year, and we just plan from that. O D E does have to approve these final expenditure reports that we do, so they look at everything. A lot of school districts do get selected for high-risk audits on these. They don't prepare them correctly, or they're late, or other issues that they have in it too, so. We're pretty solid with how we complete them and having them approved from O D E, and then it's just as simple as putting in the reimbursement request, planning out how we're gonna use those funds going forward, and just accounting for all of them. But, you know, kind of having everything organized and structured and just easy to follow as I go along, and just, you know, kind of cross off every reimbursement I make back for every expenditure that we have, make sure that we don't, you know, have any unspent funds, any mistakes along the way. Sometimes I've seen some school districts, and I can go pull their cash summaries, that they have funds just sitting in old grant accounts. And when I used to audit, you know, I remember there was one client I went to, and they just had balances and, you know, prior year accounts, faraway accounts, actually, you know, three, four years in the past, and I'm like, why are these just sitting on there? Now I know. And I kind of knew back then that they just don't reconcile, they don't clear them out, and they had balances just sitting on their books. It's quite common, to be honest. If I were to pull ten school districts, look at their cash balances, and really go through, because I know what I'm looking for, about five out of ten would have those issues on it.
And that's just money sitting there that they should be spending.
Or that they messed up in spending in some fashion, that they can't, they, they can no longer do it. The grants only exist for a certain portion of time. And actually, those three columns in kind of the red that I have all the way, way to the end, how that works as a tool. So once the fiscal year ends six-thirty, you can still encumber the funds, put them on a purchase order, you know, with the intent to spend. But let's say we didn't cut the check yet. Well, they give you three months to cut the checks for normal grants. So we can have a purchase order, let's say we're gonna buy footballs with our Title One grant. If we don't cut the checks, and we're, you know, putting that purchase order together in May or June of the school year, we're never gonna have enough time, really, to cut the check. So we encumber those funds, we have a purchase order just sitting out there. So for that purchase order, the grants allow us to pay that purchase order in July, August, or September, different fiscal year. And then we just put it in for reimbursement, go forward without the grants.
Example, what we went through this, there was, like, the air conditioning, that's S R money. We had supply chain issues, but we started far enough in advance that it was not gonna be an issue. If, if, if we had waited till, till the, near the end of the grant, and then had run into that situation, we, we may well have run into a situation where we, because we can't pay unless they're here. And right now, we, we just sat down with the two suppliers yesterday, they're telling us that new work is like a year and a half out. So anybody that's gonna use grant money for new work in their district is, they're not even gonna be able to start for a year and a half from, from right now, because they won't be able to get supplies.
There's a lot of different particular issues that come along. So the very, very bottom one that we have is our new school safety grant. Well, we actually received a hundred and fifty thousand, so we don't have to ask those reimbursement requests back to us, but we are, we're already given the full hundred and fifty thousand, so we already have that in our bank account. So that's a different way in how to fund grants. I do know a, a large school district in the state of Ohio, actually, kind of up north where we are, that cut a number of checks for grant funds, what? Oh, I thought you said who, I'm like, maybe I should name, but, but I do know one that, so they're, they're kind of coming into it where they don't wanna lose those funds, but they haven't received those items. So they cut the checks, and they're just stashing those cut checks in a safe, waiting for those items to come. So they don't wanna lose out on the grants, well, that's not the, that's not preferred practice, you really don't wanna do that. But, yeah, I mean, with grants, you wanna be early, and just account for everything, not to have everything commingled, because if we started making mistakes and kind of commingling funds, there's so much compliance that we have to do periodic reports and attestations of how we use the funds, especially with S R three. You know, I just sat in on a training last week, a two-day training, on which they spent, you know, both mornings, just, it was the Office of Budget and Management, or Management and Budget, it was O D E, it was the Auditor of State's office, just put together this, this presentation, which I think it had over eight hundred participants from the state. So you're talking about counties, school districts, villages, cities, all government, I mean, entities that would receive those funds. So we're just going through, you know, managing these as we go, and just, you know, wanted to circle back to our S Rs, because those are our big ones. S R one, we spent everything already, we spent that back in fiscal twenty. There's three S Rs. So fiscal twenty, we got about sixty thousand dollars for S R one, spent it all on supplies and equipment for cleaning, that's what we spent it on. S R two, we got about two-hundred-and-ninety thousand, and we're using that primarily for salaries for three staff members that we have here, along with some air purifiers, some classroom supplies, and some small items. some classroom supplies and some small items aside from that. ESTER three, we received six hundred and twenty-five thousand. And from that, we're going to use it, uh, on the air conditioning project over at the elementary school, a large chunk. And the other side, we're going to use it on staff members at this point to carry them forward. Now ESTER two expires at the end, nine thirty twenty-three. So we have the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to use up the remaining balance of ESTER two, which we just have thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents. So that's going to be easy for us to use that up. And then we're hopping over to ESTER three and going to start spending that down because that expires the year after that we have in place. So some schools have so much ESTER money, Mr. Evans is aware of this too, and so is Mr. Young, that they're struggling on how they're going to spend it all within the timeframes that they were given. So, um, you know, our plan has been a pretty good plan. And we've been reviewing that plan consistently as we go. And, you know, we're very cognizant about the balances that we have in place. And just the other day, our carryover for the school bus grant, uh, was approved. So I'm going to be able to put in that reimbursement request this week for us to get the hundred and eighty thousand to close that one out. Again, that's not on here because that's a four hundred state grant, not a federal grant. And I just kind of separate those by these, uh, accounting ways. And when the auditors come in, you know, it's very easy for us to go through, look at the expenditures and, you know, test. So this really helps me as a tool. I use this, um, every month, you know. When I walk down, you know, into the library, I see, um, Mrs. Clay sitting down there. And she's like, oh, you know, she knows the big sheet and I'm coming over to talk to Matt Young. So it's kind of, you know, it's a tall tale sign. But, um.
She has an intercom that tells her, huh? Just kidding. So was there additional ESTER two money then this year? Because we, or where's that? What's that?
Yeah, let me show you. So, um, the ESTER two, I actually have, uh, in the staple packets, if we look at the F B R adjustments. So let's just hop through the pages. The second page in the F B R adjustments is our ESTER two. The page after that is our ESTER three. So we can see, uh, the ESTER two was two hundred and ninety-one thousand. So that was our total grant amount that we had for ESTER two. We can see everything spent, two hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred dollars and one cent. And we can see our carryover amount, which is just the difference between those two amounts at thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents. If we look at the other handout, the allocations, flip that to the second page, that shows our incoming carryover. See how there's no original balance?
Yep.
ESTER two. Yeah, that, we only got that one-time shot of money and that carryover just continues. And this is the last year in which we can spend it. So we're going to spend down that ESTER two. Actually, I'm going to go back and open my ESTER two file right here and add more to it of the chargebacks that we have for the three staff to spend up that thirty-eight thousand. And, um, we'll be good to go to close it out. And then we're just wrapping up ESTER three. And we're all set for if another pandemic comes, more grants come down from the federal government, I'm ready. And then I just want to leave one last thing. It was actually interesting when the presentation pulled up just how much money was given for the pandemic. It was trillions of dollars. It was around five point seven, five point eight trillion dollars given for the pandemic. And the majority was for two, uh, bills, the CARES Act, which was a little over two trillion. And the American Rescue Plan, which was just under two trillion. So it's like one point nine trillion. So, uh, those were the majority of laws that were passed for, um, uh, the pandemic funding for it. So. Any other questions on?
I was curious about the safety grant. You said that it was different in the fact that they've already given us the money.
That was, that was a federal grant that you did.
And when is our deadline to, to use those funds and what plans do we have for those funds that we decided?
Yeah, uh, I can pull it up off the top of my head. I kind of had everything ESTER in my head right now. I'll have to look. So.
That's okay. If you're.
I have to, I may have to look back because there, this one, there's a supply list that we have to come up in.
There was a specific, right?
Supply list was probably about a third less than what the previous, what we, when we initially applied. Some of the things that we have, and I hate to call it a wish list, but it is a wish list, is, is the, you know, and we've talked in, in here before about, uh, redoing the alarm system in the district, the, the master control panel. Whether or not we can do that, Matt and I have to take a look at the vendor or the, at the, that vendor list and say, does this fit into that category? Because the categories are not real specific. So, um, it, it may or may not. We've also talked about signage and signage is a big, is a big section. As we, we looked at signage before. It was, it was, quite honestly, it was just too expensive at the time. I just called the signage guy back. He's going to meet with me Monday. I'm going to get him to update the previous quote, um, for district-wide signage. You know, safety film for windows, uh, an entryway inside the high school. So when you come through the first set of doors, uh, there's a, a natural kind of break there. We could create a second set of, uh, and, uh, secure entryway. So we could have some, if we needed to, we could secure somebody in that area. So I, I was out looking at that. Uh, I, I think that falls into the, so that. Any of those items can exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, we just, the, what Matt and I need to sit down and do is go through that, that sheet and say, do these fit and which, which of these is most important to us? Quite, and, and my, personally, I, I love this, I'd love for us to be able to redo the security system, our alarm system, if, if it will allow us to do that. I'm not one hundred percent certain it will. And that, quite honestly, I, I, I might even make a phone call on that just to see if that, we're falling into that category. So.
Very good. I just want to make sure the funds get used and they get used appropriately by the, by the timeframe that we need to use them.
We have a long-running list of safety. One of, uh, one example is when we pointed for the safety grant last time, we were, we were going to do the big concrete planters in front of the elementary building. So you couldn't drive a car through the front doors. That's identified as one of the weakness, weak, weak spots. The first grant, yes. The second grant, no. So it's, we, when Dave Wallace did the grant, that we could, had we been awarded that grant, we could have at the time. We didn't get awarded that grant. The second time through, that's not on the list. So again, that list is about a third, third as long as it was the initial first time. So that would remain something we want to do, but we, we can't, we know we can't do that with a set of funds.
That's too bad because that's an important thing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muccio. Very interesting presentation. Obviously, a lot of time and effort goes into that. And the entire team is a, is a contributor to this successful grant utilization. Thank you again. Mr. Muccio, you're still up, number five.
Just a few items tonight for approval. First item is five A approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting, November ninth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting, and November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting is found on attachment T one. Item six A, uh, motion to approve the bank reconciliation financial reports and payments for board review as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as prepared and certified by the Treasurers Accurate, is found on attachment T two. Item six B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W nine's attached, is found attachment T three. Six C, motion to approve purchase orders of five thousand, is found attachment T four. Six D, motion to approve modification of permanent appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, is found in attachment T five. Six E, motion to accept the attached funds for C T partnership proposal fiscal twenty-three with the Cago Valley Career Center to reimburse up to thirty thousand dollars to offset costs that directly support career technical education, is found in attachment T six. New account oh nineteen nine two-three A will be created entitled C T partnership proposal fiscal twenty-three. Six F, motion to approve the student activity programs for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year as indicated per the purpose statements on file in the Treasurer's Office, is found in attachment T seven. And six G, motion to approve the following then-announced certificate pursuant to section five seven and five point four-one of the Ohio Vice Code. Is hereby certified that both at the time of making of this contract or order, at the date of the execution of the certificate, the amount required to pay this contract or order has been appropriated for the purpose of this contract or order and is in the Treasurer or in process of collection to the credit of the bond free from any previous encumbrance. As for those motions for approval tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So may I have a motion to approve the Treasurer's Consent Agenda items, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Jackie moves. I'll second. Discussion, Mr. Muccio.
Um, sure. We looked at, um, the long sheet from, uh, item six A in there. And we really went through thoroughly, uh, last month, the five-year forecast. So we really, I think we have a great, you know, understanding of the financial items that we have and we'll continue that along the way as we go forward. If you have any questions or anyone, please let me know. I'll spend some time maybe at the next meeting or so, just going through kind of our, uh, budget detail for the general fund, just kind of recapping where we're at. New vendors, we don't have too many, just two. We opened the lead sheet for that. The first one is just, uh, Resolute Sports Products. That's just for wrestling mats and other equipment, uh, approximate cost of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and we'll talk about that more in the next item for purchase orders. And then D E X Imaging, that's, um, per our copier and per our lease. So it's just a changeover of who owns the company. So before it was Meritech, uh, who we have our, uh, lease through. And now it's been bought out for D E X Imaging. So I don't believe we're looking to purchase any new items from that. This is just a switch over in name from the business that we have. Uh, item C, purchase orders, we have just a handful. First one is our Bureau of Workers' Compensation. That always comes at Thanksgiving. Uh, I seem to always forget and then I always seem to get the email from Bureau of Workers' Comp around Thanksgiving. And I always make a note that I'm going to do it earlier in the year and then I somehow forget and eat pumpkin pie and it's off my radar. Till the next year. So it's probably going to happen next year too. But, um, this is, uh, by law. So we have the funds encumbered, uh, I shouldn't say encumbered, we have the funds appropriated. So we have a line item in our two hundred level, uh, object code expenditures for the premium that we have to pay to the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. And, um, it's for an entire year. So it starts in January of two thousand twenty-three and goes until the end of that year. And by law, employers, uh, are required to pay premiums to establish and receive workers' compensation coverage. It's the Bureau of Workers' Compensation that establishes what that premium is for the policy year. So we're told what to pay. And we have it a little bit later on on the agenda. It's all in the same ballpark, approximately forty thousand dollars premium that we have. Uh, second item is all new combustion systems. That's for, uh, new tubing for the boiler for the pool, fourteen thousand four fifty-six. Three and four were covered by insurance. So that's for Resolute Sports Products. We just looked at them as a new vendor. That's for the new wrestling mat to replace the damaged one. That's covered by insurance, the full amount, nine thousand eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. And then number four, um, from, uh, Monday through Friday, athletic company. It's the new pole vault pit to replace the damaged one. And that's covered by insurance as well. So if you add both those up, we're over thirty-one thousand. We have a check. There's a difference of like thirty dollars in the check, but that, you know, is the one of the insurance company. But we have ninety-nine point nine percent covered from all that. So, um, between those items, as well as the wall mats and cleaning, which was covered by insurance, we're looking at over fifty thousand that was provided to us by our source, our insurance provider for the damage that occurred in the auxiliary gym. So.
Shocked by both those prices because both those prices are, haven't gone up. And I bought Matt in two thousand and three, spent nine thousand dollars for Matt then. And, uh, and we, when we bought the new outdoor pit three years ago, it was twenty-two thousand dollars. So when I kind of gave the go-ahead and get, to get prices for those, I was holding on to my seat because everything else is really sticker shock. It's really, uh, things are up fifty, seventy-five percent. So for both of those to be at that price was, uh, astounding for me.
Number, or letter D, uh, is the modification of the permanent appropriations. So we have, uh, seven tonight. And that attachment kind of helps too to see it. Uh, if anybody wants to see just, uh, kind of our story along the way. But we have, uh, seven that go into it. The first one is our general fund. So that's an increase of seventy-one thousand ninety-one dollars. That's just to match us to our November five-year forecast that we approved for the total expenses that we have in place. Uh, number two is an increase of nine thousand dollars for food service. You know, we've been talking about this as an admin team, just, uh, price inflation. And we are seeing that for the food service fund just in the cafeteria. So, um, prices for, uh, food items, ice cream, um, lunch trays, napkins, um, seems to be rising as inflation goes. So that nine thousand dollars, and we're going to meet as a team. If we're going to, yeah.
We always know the ice cream price.
So it's, uh.
Called you out.
That hurts. I owe the whole third grade ice cream for their presentation last week because they all, they all found my picture on the wall. So I, I have to pony up to the third graders tomorrow, Friday.
So that's something I always look at when I walk down there for lunch. Sure. But, uh, yeah, so nine thousand dollars for the inflation that we have down there. Again, it's just, um, we're wrapped up with everybody else in the economy. Um, you know, we price out, we try to, you know, we work with the Ohio Schools Council. We just talked with them the other day. Um, so we're, we're trying, but it's just the whole, you know, chain, supply chain is just inflated. Uh, number three, uh, increase of thirty thousand dollars. So that's the fund oh nineteen, which is local grants. And that's for the, uh, Cago Valley Career Center C T grant that we have to be reimbursed of thirty thousand dollars for, um, career tech items. Mr. Evans, I think you have some good plans to go with that.
Yeah, this year, I, with, uh, with us moving the, uh, our intensive need students upstairs to the old home ec area. Even had we kept, had we been able to keep home ec, I, I wanted to upgrade that area. So I, I talked to Elena, our teacher. There's some ADA compliant, uh, appliances out there because we teach family living to those students. There, there's a stove, refrigerator and some other, some other, um, equipment that we're, we're going to upgrade that, that area for, uh, for our special needs students.
That's how we're going to use the thirty thousand dollars?
Yes. Again, that's another one of those where you get Mr. Young, myself and the principals in the room and we get boxing gloves on because everybody's got a way to spend that thirty thousand dollars. I got my way this year. Mr. Young is already lining this up for next year. So.
Number four was interesting. So that's an increase of five thousand dollars to our student managed student activity fund, so fund two hundred. So that's for those activity, uh, purpose statements that we have in place. So I went through and, uh, the students, uh, you know, from student council to the senior class, sophomore class, junior class, freshman class, they put together their fundraisers and what they think they're going to spend it on. So for homecoming, they may want a DJ and, uh, a photo booth and whatnot. So they put together their budgets and then they submit them. So we have an idea of what to appropriate. So when I started the year, I appropriated forty-five thousand dollars. When I added everything up from what they gave me back was forty-four thousand seven hundred. I'm like, wow, that's pretty spot on. But I got to increase it because they're probably going to, you know, something is going to come that's unexpected. So the bump up of five thousand is just the in case something comes and they want, you know, extra DJs or whatnot. So we have that there. Five, six, and seven is just for those carryover funds. Um, I'm just kind of rounding out the numbers for appropriations to get it, um, to an approximate number for those. But, uh, let's just, uh, do those grant carryovers from what I had initially appropriated. So, um, so we're able to, uh, spend all those funds that we have. E is just that, uh, partnership that Mr. Evans was talking about, the reimbursement with C V C C. F for just those, uh, activity purpose statements. So if you were to go through, we can see the, um, items that the kids are looking to, uh, spend it on. It's pretty fun to, to see it through as the kids sit down and, uh, plan what their revenues are. So their fundraisers, if they want to have a car wash or cookie dough sale. And actually, I have cookie dough in the freezer in the Treasurer's Office, two boxes, because two kids came in, one after the other, and I couldn't say no to the second one. But after that, kind of, you know, doing what Mr. Evans is doing, just saying, I was already gotten to, so I can't purchase any more cookie dough.
Students know that the first one that comes to me on the fundraiser is the one I buy from. So they, some of the, some of the advisors tell them, like, so when the seniors are doing something, they, they're sprinting out of the auditorium to get into my office because, you know.
I was actually, yeah, I was hungry before I got.
You got suckered by the second person. He bought the first one. He couldn't say no to the second kid.
Can't look him in the eye, man. Can't look him in the eye.
I was hungry before I got here. So I started eating some. And I remember, you know, Kathy was like, Matt, you know, when the cookie dough came, it was kind of, I don't know. So she put it in the freezer. So she's like, I hope, you know, I hope I don't get sick. And I'm like, ah, hungry cookie dough, get sick. So it's like. Knock on wood, I'm pretty good right now. So.
Glad I'm down here.
But, uh, those are interesting to see, just kind of, you know, the plans that they have in place and what they want to do. So it's fun to, to go through and see those, uh, for the kids. Then and that was just, again, it's the, um, by law, what we have to pay for the premium for Bureau of Workers' Compensation. And below I have our past history. So two thousand twenty-two, uh, was thirty-seven thousand, twenty-one was forty-four thousand, twenty was forty-two thousand, nineteen was fifty thousand, and eighteen's forty-four. So we're right in that mark and, um, you know, we. It's always, you know, we always discuss Bureau of Workers' Compensation. We know the claims that we have in place and, uh, where we go. So. Those are the items I have tonight for approval.
Very good. Thank you for those updates. Uh, if there's no other questions or comments for Mr. Muccio, we can move to a vote, please.
Uh, Mr. S. Jackie.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbin?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Ms. Press?
Aye.
Mrs. Ed.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Still on Mr. Muccio's, uh, items, agenda item number eight.
Just to have a couple of discussion items in place. Uh, the first discussion item is the alternative tax budget. So I sent on an email to everyone about last year's alternative tax budget. And then I'll write on the new one to have on the agenda for our January eleventh meeting that we have in place. And then I'll work on the new one to have on the agenda for our January eleventh meeting that we have in place, the organizational. We did get our valuation, it did slightly go up in place, so I'll work on the math behind it just to see what that comes out to be in dollars that we have, which is good news that we have. Uh again, the county comes out with timelines for the alternative tax budget, so it's not a tax budget. It's an alternative tax budget. Just means that there's a requirement by law that you have to complete a tax budget, but the county about twenty years ago came out and said, we don't need a tax budget, uh we just want certain pieces of information. So that's the alternative tax budget that they have in place, so we just work on that supplemental information for them. We're gonna tentatively pass it on January eleventh and it has to be passed by us uh from what the county's saying by January sixteen and submitted to them by January twentieth. E, the gap extension. So back in July of this year, we had contracted with the Ohio State's Office a while back for them to perform gap services, so they were to begin in July. Uh they did and we have a new team of gap auditors because our old team got switched out. One of the persons from that team went to another school to work. Uh so we have to submit our financial statements. So what happens is we're on a cash basis and we take our cash basis accounting to gap basis, generally accepted accounting principles. And we contract with the auditor's office to perform that task and then our auditors come in and audit that report that's created, so. You know, I I feel that the Ohio State does a great job with it. Uh from talking with them, they recommended uh an extension, which um isn't necessarily a layup to get approved by the state. I said, yeah, I mean, with everything surrounding the circumstances, it's, you know, reasonable. Uh filed the extension and within an hour, two hours, it was approved by the state, which was the quickest I'd ever seen, so. Um I'm sure that, you know, they were all talking about in the scenes of, you know, for this uh extension. So we got an extension basically of a month. So instead of it being um at the end of November, it's now the end of December. So we're just going along through it now. We have a bit more time to to go a slower pace just to make sure everything is triple-checked, so we're doing that as we uh roll and we'll have that in place uh sooner than later coming up. And just the last item is the uh school safety grants that we were talking about. So uh the state came out and awarded all the grants to those schools that wanted for round three. Uh we did not receive a grant in that round. We did in round two, which was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we did not in the first round that we have in place. We tried for the third round as well as trying for the second. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Muccio. Very informative, covered a lot of bases, covered a lot of ground. Um num- agenda item number nine, superintendent's business, Mr. Evans.
N A, motion to approve the attached updated two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three student fees as recommended per the list. E, uh motion to approve uh Fortunato Spadera to receive a stipend for a total of fifty dollars to train a Chase employee as a result of a change of assignment. C, motion to approve the pool rental at the cost of two hundred dollars per practice for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Ten A, accept the resignation of Joe Blados as mechanic effective the end of the day, December sixteenth twenty-twenty-two. Eleven A, motion to approve Jay Kiefer as interim school principal per the attached agreement contingent on successful completion of B C I F I fingerprint, background checks if applicable, and the contract is attached there. Thirteen A, motion to approve supplemental stipend adjustment for Barb Curry as the science fair coordinator elementary school from one to one-half contract for twenty-two, twenty-three school year, previously board approved as one contract on five twenty-five. Motion to approve supplemental stipend adjustment for Brooke Dragon as student council advisor from high school from one-half to one contract for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, previously approved as one-half contract on five twenty-five. C, motion to approve supplemental contract for Christie Zawatski as student council advisor for high school from one-half to one for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, previously approved as one-half contract for the uh twenty, on five twenty-five twenty-two. And motion to approve the attached supplemental position chat, contract list is updated twelve, seven, twenty-two. School year contingent upon B C I F I background and certified certifications. Fourteen A, motion to approve contract with music. I'm sorry, skipped one there. Thirteen A, motion to approve Karikovich as substitute secretary for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Fourteen A, motion to approve a contract with music Theater International per the attached agreement for the royalty and rental for the school play Mama Mia for three performances to take place April twenty-eighth through the thirtieth two thousand twenty-three for a cost of two thousand eighty-five dollars. B, motion to approve agreement with six-one-four Entertainment L C C for DJ services for the prom two thousand twenty-three. Be held on May twelfth at a cost of one thousand and twenty-nine dollars. C, motion to approve membership with Western Cogga County Schools Crisis Counseling Team for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year at a cost of a one hundred fifty dollars, excuse me. D, motion to uh extend current tuition agreement to January third, two thousand and twenty-two. I ask for those items approval.
Very good. So I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Twenty-three, I'm sorry, that's twenty-three, not twenty-two on that motion, the last one I just read.
To January third, two thousand twenty-three is the way it should read.
And I'm going, I'm going in and changing it right now. And it is changed and saved. My apologies. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Evans.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda items. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Edder wins. Okay, discussion, please.
Student fees, uh the the Google is attached there. The changes are highlighted. Lock replacement goes from was five goes to seven dollars. And then the club fees, uh French model U N. Ski club membership, which we did not run this year, and Spanish club have changed. Stipend for Sonny Fortunato, uh we had a employee move uh from bus driver to a custodian. Uh there's a s- um stipulation in the contract that they can re- they can have a mentor get training Sonny. Uh we're gonna pay Sonny fifty dollars for his training of Chris Clements uh as a custodian. The pool rental call should previously approve the agreement with um North Ridgeville Schools. This is, this is the fee as set. Uh will be two hundred dollars uh a practice. Resignation of Joe Blados mechanic effective the end of the day. Yet to talk to Joe about this, but apparently the Village of Brooklyn Heights has uh scooped him up at a substantial pay increase, so. Good luck to Joe as he moves to the Village.
You said Brooklyn Heights?
Uh that's what I've been informed about. Yeah, I haven't talked to him.
Because he's a councilman in Brooklyn Heights.
I know, so he'll have to, yeah.
Resign, yeah.
The uh the contract for uh Jay Kiefer is attached there, previously discussed that. Supplemental stipend for Barb Curry. Barb is moving from one full contract to a half. The other I believe the other half is being split in quarters by two other staff members. Brooke Dragon and Christie, student council actually has two advisors in the contract. They were, when they were awarded the position, they, for whatever reason, were put on as having split the contract, so we just correct, made that correction. That's that's according to the to the chat contract. And the updated supplementals for the board. You can see the uh L P D C chairman, Carolyn Douglas and Brooke Dragon are gonna split that. Science fair coordinator, uh Matt Mark, Mark Williams and Matt Solzberger, they're splitting that at the other half of Barb Curry's there. Science, high school science, Jim Rademacher, student council, as I told you about those changes, and the others are are substitute scoreboard operators that would be paid at an hourly rate if we need them. Karikovich is leaving us, but is willing to do some um subbing for us in the future, so we're gonna add Kara to that sub list. The contract with M T I, you know, this is an annual, when we pick the school play, we've got to pay for the royalties and the rental of the to use the the play, uh Mama Mia. Um that looks to be fun. Six-one-four Entertainment uh DJ services, that's actually, that's uh, I believe that's a, there's a student account. Those are student raise funds, that's our two hundred account, is that correct? Yeah, yeah. So the student, so the students have uh found a DJ. Uh Western Cogga County Crisis Counseling Team, we were members of this for a long time, then we weren't for a number of years. When Mrs. uh Thrasher came on back, back on board, she's been a member through Brexwell. Actually, we were one of the founding members of this counseling team and then we for whatever reason, our counselors dropped off of it. Um but Holly's real active in it, Audrey LaBenza's very active in it. If you look at the contract there, you see the other schools that are involved and we actually hosted one of their meetings here last month. So and then i- in a case of a crisis, then like our counselors have been called out to, I think, last year when Berea had a a suicide, uh both of our counselors uh the next day were onsite uh to assist with counseling services for Berea schools, so that all those counselors then head out to help out their uh colleagues. Uh motion to extend the tuition agreement. Um I explained that in my Friday update. Uh this parent's been uh really upfront about uh trying to get this done for us, so um I ask for those items approval.
If there's no other questions or updates from Mr. Evans, we, Mr. Muccio, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dobbin.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mrs. Decker.
Aye.
Ms. Press.
Aye.
Mr. Sichak.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Mr. Evans, uh discussion complete?
Um just a couple things. Uh what's going on in Columbus, I'm trying not to watch, but unfortunately, my inbox is inundated um with the insanity going on down there. Um today, um Senate Bill one ninety-seven passed the Senate. You know, I talked to Mr. uh Sichaki and Mr. Dobbin about this last week. I I got answers to my own questions on that, Gary, because actually, the career tech part of this bill is good. The elimination of the uh state Board of Education as a, with everything, with the exception of licensing, uh is not good. They're essentially gonna uh create a cadment position that answers to the governor, so now we're gonna politicize the who oversees the Department of Education regardless of who's in power, so that we're not gonna have any consistency in who who oversees education in the state of Ohio, because it's gonna change every time a governor changes. Uh that's not a good thing for us in education. Uh I sent you the link today um for the um, if if you'll notice, um Tony Potajol and O S B A both gave testimony as interested parties. They did not want to anger Mr. Brenner and say they were opposition parties, which they truly are to this. Uh the fear is that with Mr. Brenner and uh and his, the power that he's gonna have over the Education Committee and now uh Mr. Maron and and leadership down there, that uh the education entities don't wanna be on the wrong side because they have the super majority. So essentially, after the first of the year, anything they want to do, they can do. And they can override any veto by the governor, not necessarily would, but um so it's, we're gonna fall upon some very interesting times in education in the state of Ohio. I also talked to you about the backpack bill. That has many flaws to it. I I I'm kind of waiting for that to rev up today. Uh I looked to see if there's any progress on that, H B two ninety. That's not good legislation for us either. That essentially says that uh uh they have they talked about amounts, but they haven't set those amounts. My biggest beef with that is that, you know, we get in the vicinity of six hundred and fifty dollars per student, and I I kind of forwarded you some information last week on that. So they're gonna say the money follows the kid. Well, if one of our students decide to go to, I'll just pick on San Ignatius. They don't take the six hundred and fifty with them, they take seventy-five hundred with them. And we in turn can't accept students. We, we're not eligible. It's only for non-public schools. So eighty percent, they estimate that up to eighty percent of the students that will receive vouchers have never stepped foot in a public school. And and could potentially receive money through this legislation. So there's a lot of flaws to it. I, you know, I know that all the organizations, O S B A, BASSA, the Alliance are all working hard on this. Um I I just don't know where it is right now. Somebody said they were, it was gonna get run through in lame duck. There really isn't any need to because they're gonna come back after the first year with a super majority. They can let it drop and just rewrite it and then they'll get through whatever they want to get through after the first of the year. So um I I'm not certain about that. Tuition, I I put a December fourteenth, three o'clock in my office, we're gonna talk about tuition. I sent invitations to all the board members. I can only have two of you there. I, you guys can battle that out to figure out, but um uh I'm gonna have some of the administrative team there to to discuss tuition rates for next year. And I've been telling everybody all along, they're gonna go up. It's a matter of, I think Matt's got a really good formula that he kind of brought up um in our admin meeting that we'll discuss first and foremost as to how how much we're gonna raise those tuition rates. Um Santa breakfast on Saturday was a huge success. My hats off to the P T O. The place was incredible. Uh did a great job. Uh I I kind of want to jump into the snowball fight that they had in the hallway with the the cotton things. That looked to be the most fun there. Um but uh great job by all, by everybody and and had, and they wanted me to thank Mrs. McPherson and Mrs. Orlando, the art teachers, because they were kind of short on decorations and they called them like Wednesday and 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 they said both of them went head over heels to uh create additional decorations for the uh Santa breakfast, so uh good thing there. Met with G P D yesterday uh to go over the installation schedule for the the units are here. The twenty-third, they're gonna bring the units onsite, the air conditioning units. I took Mr. Muccio's approach to this. Um I I'd rather them under promise on dates and then over deliver. Um I think our G P D was kind of pushing them for more and I said to Martin, I said, I'd rather be a little more conservative. So they think they can get uh during the week after Christmas, they think they can get two units in. Uh we're gonna go room by room with that and then once we get in, once we get out of the break, um we'll move one classroom out at a time. And we'll do one room at a time, working our way through all six rooms. So we'll be able to use the library uh as a, as the go-to. And they anticipate two to three days for each room um in the, in those rooms, so. And then uh we can't run a test on the system until outside temperatures get up in the high seventies or eighties because you can't you can't run the, the air conditioning won't run if it's, if it's not, if the outside doesn't match it up. You just can't, it's not like a window unit where you just turn it on, start throwing cold air because it is a pressurized system, so uh but but they'll they'll run through the heat and they'll get all the heat running on that end of it, so um that was a good meeting. I also talked to G P D. Um the bid to fix the H V A C and the ancillary gym came back at over fifty thousand dollars. The quote did, so we have to send that out to bid. So I've asked G P D to write the specs up on that and we'll send that. Uh we'll advertise that for bids. Uh we've, we'll talk to the one company that's already kind of a done one and see if they want to redo it, but uh quite honestly, and I said this to Martin and uh Jason as they were there. I'm not sure how many companies will jump on it because of the size. It's not a, it's not a really big project, so. We have, we have one quote right now. They, that might be the only one that comes through. If that is, we'll, we're still gonna follow the process. Uh it'll get publicized. We'll have a bid meeting. We'll go over this, G P D will go over the specs for the, what we're looking to get done. Uh they'll have a certain amount of time to get those in and then we'll open them, publicly open those um and uh and determine who we're gonna award the bid to at that point in time. So they're they're also still working on the groundwater survey. They've got some monitors in the building where we've got some cracks in the building to see if there's any movement. They're they're also uh waiting for a couple other tests to come back, so I I think Jason was a little, not real happy with some of his people because he's trying to push them all of it, so they know that some of the things that we want to plan to move forward with, we can't do until we know um what's going on with that groundwater underneath the building. So um um I also talked to them about the best meeting. We'll have uh Jason back at a best meeting after the first of the year to talk a little bit about um, you know, what that looks like. Again, I I missed the meeting when thankfully, that Matt had to sit through, that had the sticker shock of repricing the renovations from before COVID to now. So um not not a fun meeting to be a part of, so. Uh but again, G P D is like super professional. They they're gonna get some timelines to us for their work with Gardner. They do a great job of checking on that and we seem to have a a a good setup in place, so when I get those, when I get the stuff from G P D out, order to you is what that schedule looks like. They're gonna do a regular printout schedule for us, so. Any questions on any of that?
My only question is on the tuition meeting that you penciled in for the fourteenth, and I understand two board members can be present. If people know already that they'd like to participate, by all means, uh like we can discuss that this evening, otherwise feel free just to reach out to Mr. Evans and.
Do you remember the time?
Three o'clock, I said three o'clock and I did, we have.
And that would be a week from today, right?
Yes, because there's a concert that night, so I know that my admins are hanging around. I didn't want to make it too late because some of the admins won't be the concert, some of us are gonna be here online now, so we might as well. Take the best use of that time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Um moving on to agenda items.
Oh, one one other thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm gonna invite Mr. Bjork and Mr. Fried to January's meeting so they can further go through and answer some of the questions that that Gene posed tonight, so um we're gonna, I'll get the questions off of the, off of that. I I do know, and I'm gonna speak in generality, is that that the the survey was a kind of a culmination. We taught, those L C L standards were taught last year. Those are state standards. Those aren't our standards. Those are state standards. Um we, with other, when we teach other curriculum, we have intercourse exams at at different grade levels. There is no exam for the S E L. This is, this is kind of a culminating event for us with our S E L standards. I'm not gonna go into the detail about how we would use that. I know in general generality because of that discussion that's had with me, and I will say that the students, uh the parents could have. And I will say that the students, the parents could have opted out of that. And, and, and also, the students, Mr. Fried told me that he gave the instructions to the students that they could at any time stop taking the survey. So they were, they were given that option as well if they wanted to.
And I'll say, as a mother of a seventh grader, I had the same question that Jean did.
Okay.
Just because it said, talk with your student about it, but I didn't know what they were asking.
Anyway, I, we, to my knowledge, this was, this was a state recommended group. The, the reach group was. So this is somebody we got right off the state website. We've never dealt with them before. We don't get any personally identifiable information back on this. This is, my understanding is that there's some general, but I'm not going to go too much into depth of that, because I don't want to go down the wrong. Brian Fried has done a lot of work with that, and he worked with Mr. Bjork on the administrative end.
And it's a good idea not for January.
Yeah.
Talk it through.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Agenda item 17, Board Business Resolutions. We need to elect a president pro temp to preside over the organizational meeting. It's a very brief tenure, put it that way. Yeah, I like that.
Ten minutes. It's a ten-minute tenure.
Yeah, at most, at most. So with that background, unless there are any questions, I'll open the Florida nominations for that, that job.
And I'll nominate Mr. Dobbins.
Okay, we'll accept if nominated. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a second.
You can tell how quickly nobody else wants to take it, how quickly they, they close the nominations, huh?
And I will note that as background, I think in the years that I've been on the board, I think almost every year that the current standing president would continue to serve as a pro temp. So I, this wouldn't be unusual if that's how it plays out. If, unless there's any other nominations, we can, we move to a vote then, please? Mr. Mucho, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sichaki?
Aye.
Ms. Pross?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. Utter?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye, am I allowed to vote on this? Okay, then, yes. Aye, the motion passes five zero. Thank you. Item, item 18, Board Consent, Board Consent Agenda Approval. We just went through that. Nineteen, I don't, I'm not aware of any other matters that the board is going to act on this evening, so we can pass that item up. So we're moving on to Agenda Item 19, which is Board Committee Reports Comments. Does anyone have anything to share for the group this evening? I will offer up a few things. Several thank yous. Firstly, to Mr. Young and Mr. Evans for inviting the board to attend the recent Professional Development Days on November 21st and 22nd. It was a truly a collaborative effort. And I also, at the same time, need to thank Cogga Heights Fire Department and Seven Hills Fire Department, their chiefs, Mr. Sui and Mecklenburg, for their informative presentation on food allergies. And also, I need to thank, or we should thank, the Villages of Cogga Heights, Brooklyn Heights, and Valley View for their joint participation in that day's safety training. It was a very interesting time and time well spent. With that, I don't have any other comments. No one else does, we'll move forward.
I just wanted to, again, say thanks to Ms. Petrunia and her 32 years of service here at Cogga Heights. I had an opportunity to visit with her on her last day, and she truly is a treasure for us. Her service here is, at least from my viewpoint, very well appreciated, all the work that she's done here. So I thank her. Hopefully, she can ease into retirement and, well, and have a better opportunity.
In 60 days, we're going to be back in touch with her.
I know. I understood that.
To help us with the stuff of the quality, because that, that's, she's invaluable with that. That five-star rating, that, that, it's in large part due to the effort that she puts into that, so.
And also, I know December's a very busy time with a lot going on here at the school, and only the students doing their, their classwork and coursework and tests, but all the orchestral and band and choir concerts and the athletic games that are going on. So I hope that the next few weeks are, are good ones for our students and staff as they look forward to winter break.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 20A and B. Mr. Evans circulated the draft calendar for 2023. Pretty comprehensive as the board meetings for next year, and it also included agenda review, but those are not formal board meetings. So please review that, and if there's any schedule conflicts, let Mr. Evans know ASAP.
What we'll do is we'll do two separate calendars, so they'll, because I don't want anybody to believe that the agenda reviews are public meetings. So there'll be, as we've done in the past, there'll be a separate agenda review schedule that goes out, and the board president can determine how he wants to do that. But they'll be on Thursdays. And then, the, the calendar that we'll publish is the board meeting calendar. Please check. I, I think we kind of steered around some breaks, some vacations here, but I, you know, sometimes board members have conflicts that they know about. Mrs. Utter, the one I'm looking at does have your birthday on it, so I.
I know, she corrected it.
Okay.
She was able to correct it. Yeah, she told me.
So we pretty much stuck to the, the two a month there. Work session, first meeting, regular session, the second meeting, with the exception of December, and then we'd, one in July as well, so.
Does anybody know when spring break is going to be?
The 7th. It starts Friday, the 7th, I think, and then goes that whole.
April?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So it's okay that there would be a, well, it would have to be an agenda review during that week?
Certainly, that'll be done via Zoom. Probably a guy with mouse here standing behind me.
I know. I was thinking about you. Looking ahead. Hostile conflicts, that's all.
Very good. So one of the other items that's been routed for your review is the list of current committee appointments, and then we need to discuss and decide who will fill those roles in the next year. So if you have interests this evening that you'd like to share, we can start penciling that in. To the extent we do that this evening, we wouldn't have to revisit it next, next month, presumably. But if you don't, we certainly need to finish our review next, at the organizational meeting.
And you all have a shared document with this, so if, you know, if it's easier for you, you can go out in the column just to the right of the, the committee. And if you want to, you can put your name next to that, because again, these were last year's. Just a reminder, these committees don't have to exist unless the board feels they need to exist. If the board feels the need for other committees, that's certainly within your purview to, to add committees to this. You know, we took off the, I think we, we took off a, which committee did we remove? We removed one committee that, oh, the, maybe the COVID or something. There might have been something there that related to COVID that we took off, because we moved through that. So again, you've got it as a shared document. I'll double check and make sure that you, that I've shared it with all of you. And you can just add, you're all editors. You can add in the column like right next to it, you know. Jen, if you want to be on the alumni relations, that you'll, you know, you'll sit on that, and then we can, we can talk through filling in the rest of those.
I just plan on remaining on best committee.
Okay.
At least about me and for Gary are also.
Yeah, I wouldn't think I was ever really on that, so you can have that spot. I like the ones I've had, so I would like to stay on the one committees I've been on, if that's at all possible, that aligns with everybody else's interests.
Seems reasonable to me. Okay, so we're making a lot of progress already.
Jen, you said best, and what else? I'm sorry, Jen.
I could take maybe spot in alumni.
Okay. Which I will tell you, I don't believe is had met in the last two years, so, I mean, if there's a need to, for whatever reason, I haven't heard from the Alumni Association, and my brother's on the executive committee, so I'm sure if something was going on that they needed us, I would have heard something, so.
So, you know, Mr. Evans, this might be a good time for, for Ms. Decker and perhaps Ms. Pross's benefit, and myself as well, to just kind of go through these committees and liaise on positions, and just maybe, if we can, just use our memory and figure out what, well, how often that committee may have met, what's their purpose, and maybe, if you know, when, what the impetus was or what the genesis was for this particular assignment.
Certainly. You know, we'll start at the top. Obviously, the board's reappointed Mr. Sichaki to the Career Center Board, so that's something that you've already decided moving forward. The Chamber of Commerce, we're members of the Chamber of Commerce, and they, they asked for a liaison from the, from, from us. Generally speaking, we attend one, maybe two chamber meetings a year. I went to the State of the Villages luncheon. I was the only school member that was there. Or Gary was there with the Career Center. But, but the State of the Schools is the big one, and that takes place in May for that.
Those are luncheons typically?
Those are lunch, yeah, those are luncheons at the Holiday Inn. And, yeah, that, that's picked up through the board service fee, so I don't think the, ESC doesn't, ESC picks up the cost for our students to attend that. But we've got a board service fee that you'll vote on in January that gets picked, the cost that gets picked up for that. Legislative liaison, it's just someone that I work through. If there's legislative issues, I call Mr. Dobbins if we, if we need to get some emails to state legislators. I try to work through one board member while I try to keep you all informed on those items. Legislative delegate, that I think that deals most commonly with OSBA, and that was Mrs. Pross last year. OSBA Student Achievement Liaison, we haven't had one, but that's somebody that generally is assigned to keep on my case to make sure we've got something in the Student Achievement Fair. So, you know, this last year, we had the middle school students do the Safety Week presentation. We've had, Scarlet Angels were down two years ago. We've, we've been in the Student Achievement Fair many years. There's only one year that we weren't a part of it, so we, we're always looking for, to be a part of that, Student Achievement Fair. Tax Abatement Review Liaison, Mr. Sichaki and Mrs. Utter is the sub. I think that has to go back to, that goes back to the Villages. When the Villages have meetings that concern us, they would generally call and say, do you want us somebody to attend that? Mrs., if we work, we'll get the Valley View's a little bit. Transportation Liaison, the Transportation Committee, Mr. Young oversees that. Mr. Young would invite if, with, if we had a major transportation meeting, like when we did when we were bringing on the Trans Finder, so a board member would attend that and can kind of get the nuts and bolts of what we're doing with that. Communications Forum, that's if there's a need for us to sit down with the teachers. This isn't necessarily a union, a grievance, I think that there's issues that are on their mind that we want to talk about before they become problems. Mrs. Schukert and Mrs. Utter, we had one in the fall here. The year before, we didn't have one at all that year. The year before that, we had one. So Valley View Economic Development Liaison, Valley View invites somebody to that, so we don't necessarily point that. So they've asked that Mrs. It, so that's something that Mayor Jerry and the council, they know that we've got three Valley View members, so I, whether they reach back out to Maria, but that, I'm certain they'll reach out to one of the three of you to ask you to be a part of that. I don't, quite honestly, I don't think they invited Mrs. Utter to the one meeting that they had that had an impact on us, because I think you found out afterwards.
Well, that, there was, there was confusion when that was going to be, and it sort of got decided, not in an actual meeting setting, but everyone decided, gave their input.
Okay. Finance Committee, I, you know, Mrs. Schukert, Mr. Dobbins, I would, I would say we really need to make sure that we get something. We have some finance meetings this year, because if we're talking about possibly being on next fall, we certainly have to have some serious talks with the Finance Committee about what that looks like, how, what, where. Because quite honestly, I, in my eyes, and I think Matt's eyes, the recommendation for whatever we would do would originate from the Finance Committee. And I know that that's been difficult for us to get some community involvement in that. I think we almost need to go back and invite some, send some personal invitations out to some people to see. I think that things are relatively calm here at school, and I think, you know, if people know that they're going to contribute without somebody standing up and screaming at them at a meeting, I think that they're more likely to do that, so. The Audit Review Committee, Matt, you want to mention that?
Yeah, we have that in place when the, again, everybody's backed up, so when, when our audits come down from the other state's office, that committee's there to review those.
They'll be with the auditor when the auditor comes in and goes through the audit, and, and here's the breakdown on that. Technology Committee, Mr. Sichaki said on that, that's again, Matt Young organizes that with Robert, and, and they sit and work on technology goals. And again, that's, you know, we're always looking at placing laptops, upgrading systems, looking for that, so that's, that's pretty important to us. They generally meet before meetings, so I think if we were going to have a six o'clock meeting, they would probably meet at five o'clock, that same day to, to kind of back things up, so you're not coming to a separate meeting. The best meetings, we got best up and running again, looking, and again, that best is going to be the crux of what we do a lot with, moving forward with the facilities, updates and, and those types of things. So certainly, and that's how, we've always had good participation in that. Student Advisory Committee, when I was principal, I ran the student advisory committees, and I had two board members sit on it. I think Mr. Young, did you do this at all? So it.
There are other things going on with that.
Right, and, and really, with the change over in principals, I don't know that, this is not something I would drop on a brand-new principal to say, oh, by the way, you have to have a meeting with eight selected students and two board members present. So it's kind of a second year or third year for a, for a principal to.
I remember doing it a couple of times, you know, when I first started on the board.
Okay.
And, you know, I always welcomed the opportunity to speak to our students and see what issues are on their minds and concerns, and, you know, usually, there's a great group of young people with some great ideas, who are really just looking for the betterment of the district. So I'm happy to participate in that if that is revisited, is, you know.
Yeah, our students are blatantly honest with us. You know, so they, there was a couple of times I wanted to crawl to the table, and they were saying some of the things, but it was, but they were, that was, it came from the heart. I mean, that was fine. That was what they were, that was what they were feeling, so. Healthcare Cost Containment Committee, we're always looking at options there. As options become available, this committee meets, I know when they, when we had the opportunity to reduce our vision and dental costs, Mr. Mucho pulled a committee meeting together, invited the board members, and we have members of both unions be a part of that, so we look at some options there. And certainly, healthcare cost containment is something we're always interested in doing here, looking at options. The Alumni Committee, again, the Alumni Association hasn't, hasn't needed anything from us lately. Mark Chase does a really good job of running it. If they would, we certainly would love to have somebody attend on behalf of the board just to say, you know, we're here, we're, we support you, we love what you do. They've got the archive room downstairs, and I say yes to most of their things. They did want, they did want a room where they were going to kind of recreate a classroom in old style. I said, no, we don't have the room to do that, so that was, that's, that was the only thing I said no to them recently. So there, it was one of the old offices on the second floor. They wanted to take it and, and, you know, just turn it back to like the 1960s or something. I said, we don't have the space. I've got people every square inch that we have, and so I'm sorry, but not happening, so. But, you know, that, that, I think that's a, the Alumni Association's been hugely supportive. You know, you'll see when scholarships come out, when that senior awards ceremony, the amount of scholarship money that our Alumni Association generates is incredible for a district this size, so we keep relations healthy with them. And again, like I said, my brother's on the committee, so I'm the first one to hear about it if something's not working, so, with them. not working, so, with them. So that's a little description of some of those, so.
Yeah, thank you for that background, and then you'll send us a link to this group shared document, that's gonna be really helpful, and between now and January, we can fill that in and pick up the conversation in January.
Again, if there's something that we're missing, too, and, and quite honestly, if we are gonna talk about levy, I don't, with what's happened in the state and the meetings that we've been to, I don't, I don't know that we can have a board levy committee, quite honestly, I, I'm, I'm gonna look into that a little bit, some districts are hypersensitive to some of the, the way the state auditors going after some people, other districts, like I know, my good friend Ted over at Brooklyn just disregarded all of it, and went ahead and did what they needed to do anyhow to get their renewal passed, so, and nobody came after him, so, but I, it is, it is a lot, there, there is some heightened awareness with it right now.
Very good, but you, you see a, a very strong and compelling need for a reconstituted Finance Committee as an adjunct to the capital planning that we're talking.
Has to, I, I don't.
Because up until now, there hasn't been a strong need to have a financial, a periodic financial presentation, because Mr. Mucho does one monthly that's very thorough and comprehensive.
But, it, and I think that that's all well and good for this group, but I think there also needs to be community people that have some finance, or even if you don't have a finance background, the way Mr. Mucho breaks things down, I think, he puts it in pretty, pretty much layman's terms where you can find things, I think it's important for us to have some input, I, I know that at one point in time, we tried to invite each of the clerk treasures from the villages, that lasted a short period of time, because they, they've got a lot of other responsibilities back in their villages, and we certainly understand that, that they don't have the time to, for that kind of commitment, but I, you know, that might be something I'd bring up at a mayor's meeting, if they, if they can give me the name of somebody to call in their village to, that could give us some contribution to, to those items, I haven't had a mayor's meeting in a, in a couple of years with COVID and everything else, we didn't meet, I, I told Jack, Jack Bocci always schedules them, I said, Jack, I think we're, we're in need of a little mayor's meeting, so I can give an update to the mayors as to, I don't know that they're actually listening to our meetings, Jack will always call me when he's got a question, as, as will Jerry and Mike, if there's a question, but I, I just think sitting down with them for an hour and, and going through where we at, where we going, what are we doing, and then gives them the opportunity to ask me some questions, too, because they've always seems to have a question that I didn't know was out there.
Good, very good. With that background, let's move on to number twenty-one, which is future agenda items, does anyone have something they'd like to offer for a future agenda? If not, then we'll move forward to twenty-two A, the information, it should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting, thus they have had considerable opportunity to study and ask questions, et cetera. Upcoming regular meetings, the next meeting will be our organizational meeting to be held on Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at six PM, and I'm going to assume that it's going to be in this room?
Yes.
In this, in the Banner of Onray Media Center? Okay. With, that's another item.
I guess I'm, I'm, just for, that's been done two different ways in the past, we've had an organizational meeting, then they have adjourned, then we started the regular meeting after that, I think most recently, we, we've just done an organizational meeting and then moved right into a regular meeting, so, whatever is the board's wishes and that, we generally do them, because the organizational meeting is generally, it's its own separate function.
Right.
But then we, I don't, we haven't broken any laws by transitioning right into a regular meeting, and quite honestly, the difference was if you stopped the meeting and restarted, you got paid for two meetings that night.
That's what I understood.
So, we, we haven't done it that way in five or six years, but I did wanna tell you that there was a couple ways that the board can go about doing that.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'm gonna move to agenda item number twenty-three, I hereby move that the board adjourned to executive session pursuant to ORC section one twenty-one point twenty-two G one, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment and or compensation of employees and or officials of the district, may I have a second, please? Mr. Suchaki, seconds? No discussion, let's move to a vote, please.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Decker.
Aye.
Ms. Prowse.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
The motion passes five zero at seven twenty-six PM, and we are now in executive session, thank you.
And no action will be taken.
No action will be taken after.